The special meeting of the Jersey Shore Area School Board of Directors will come to order. Mr. Enders, roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Calhoun.
Here.
Ms. Dobler.
Here.
Ms. Edwards.
Here.
Mrs. Grant. Mr. Kinley.
Here.
Mrs. Petrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Stemler.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Eight members present, one absent.
May you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am now going to turn the procedure over to Mr. Holland.
Good evening. My name is Fred Holland. I'm an attorney in Williamsport, and I've been asked to act as hearing officer for this special meeting of the Board of Directors. The purpose of the meeting and the hearing tonight is to determine whether Serena Henry should be removed from employment in the Jersey Shore Area School District pursuant to Section 514 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code. And I believe you are Ms. Henry. Is that correct?
Correct.
I had been expecting that you were going to be represented by an attorney, Mr. Dryer.
I, my paperwork that I received on Friday just gave me information that the meeting was held today here. It did not say I could bring in representation. All my other discipline letters did. This one did not.
Okay. Is it your desire to proceed with an attorney or without an attorney?
I'm taking it forward.
Okay. And it's also my understanding that through Mr. Dryer, you had requested that the hearing be public. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is it still your desire to have the hearing be public?
Correct.
Okay. So this hearing will be conducted similar to a hearing in a court of law, although the rules of evidence are relaxed in administrative hearings such as this one. What that means is that Mr. Smith will present his evidence through witnesses and through exhibits. He will share with you any exhibits that he has. When he's finished questioning the witnesses, you may question them. After you question them, members of the board may question witnesses as well. After Mr. Smith has presented his case, then you may present your case. You can present testimony yourself. You can present testimony of others by asking them questions and getting their testimony that way. And you can admit any documents you wish for the board to consider as exhibits. So do you understand the procedure that we're going to use?
Yes.
And are you ready to proceed at this time? Are you ready to move forward?
Yes.
Just for background, I will say one further thing, and that is I will read the relevant portion of Section 514 of the Public School Code so that the board and the parties will have that provision fresh in their mind. It provides as follows: "The Board of School Directors in any school district, except as herein otherwise provided, shall, after due notice, giving the reasons therefore, and after hearing if demanded, have the right at any time to remove any of its officers, employees, or appointees for incompetency, intemperance, neglect of duty, violation of any of the school laws of this commonwealth, or other improper conduct." Mr. Smith, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to make any type of opening statement?
Before we begin, can I request that if there are witnesses in the audience, they be sequestered?
Ms. Henry, what he's asking is that if there are people that are going to testify on your behalf, that they would be asked to not be present during the hearing so that they don't hear the testimony of others. Do you intend to call any people as witnesses on your behalf?
I was given no direction on what tonight looks like, so I was not prepared to bring witnesses.
And so there are a number of people who are here.
The understanding was that they were allowed to speak on my behalf.
Well, they would have to speak on your behalf as witnesses who are called and asked to give testimony. So if you think that some of them intend to speak on your behalf, then I will be granting the motion to sequester them, and they will have to remain outside until it's their time to testify. So perhaps I should ask members in the audience section, how many of you here intend to speak on behalf of Ms. Henry?
We were told there would be time for public comment after both sides have been presented. We were promised that we'd be able to make public comment at that time.
Well, I'm not sure who said that to you, but public comment would not be testimony. If you're going to present testimony, if you want the board to take into consideration what you're saying and making its decision, then you would be a witness who's presenting testimony. You'd be sworn in, subject to cross-examination, and that sort of thing. So in a, in a hearing under Section 514 of the school code, public comment is not generally permitted. It would be totally at the discretion of the board president whether to permit comment. But frankly, it would confuse things as to whether it's sworn testimony or not.
I was at the last meeting and purposely asked that question, whether there would be time for public comment after both sides gave their positions and whatever was happening. And I was told by the school board that yes, there would be in fact time for public comment at that time. Was I misinformed? The solicitor said that yes, there would be time for public comments.
Okay. Well, let me confer with the board president, but understand again that if what you're doing is making public comment, it's not going to be part of the record. It's not going to be something that the board will accept as something that they must rely upon in terms of the testimony presented as part of the record. But let me confer with Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Okay. In conferring with Ms. Thomas, she has indicated that she will permit public comment courtesy of the floor, up to three minutes per person, but under the restrictions that I've given you before. So that if there's anybody that wants to present testimony that would become part of the record of the hearing, you would have to do that during the hearing and before the public comment time.
Thank you.
So with that, is there anybody who would intend to present testimony during the hearing versus public comment?
I have no one.
Okay. Seeing no hands, then.
Again, I was given no direction on tonight.
I understand that, other than you were consulting with an attorney, I presume.
He was given no direction on what tonight would look like either.
Right. Well, the local agency law is a law by which hearings such as this are conducted, and it would be consistent with the guidelines that I've just given. So with that in mind, there are no witnesses who will be accepted as witnesses during the hearing unless you remove yourself from the room at this time. And again, Mr. Smith, do you have anything in the way of an opening statement?
Yes, briefly. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we will be presenting tonight a replete record of evidence substantiating multiple incidents that ring the bells in the statute that Mr. Holland read, pointing to incompetently neglect of duty and other improper conduct on the part of this employee in the performance of her duties. There are multiple instances over a period of time, more than a year, where there have been failures in important aspects of this employee's job to include purchasing of necessary equipment and uniforms for athletics, scheduling transportation, scheduling games, and violating directives of the administration relative to her performance. There have been, prior to the events leading to this termination, three incidents of prior discipline, including a one-day suspension arising out of an April 22 incident, a two-day suspension arising out of a May 2022 incident, and a four-day suspension arising out of an 11 November of '22 incident. Suffice it to say that the evidence will be substantial, that this employee failed to adhere to the duties of her position, that she was given ample opportunity to perform, and that she failed to do so, thus justifying termination for any of the three areas that I've cited or all of the three areas that I've cited. And this will all be documented through written testimony and the oral testimony of the superintendent to whom she was ultimately responsible. Thank you.
Okay. Would you call your first witness, please? I think I will swear witnesses in as they are called.
We'll call Dr. Brian Olmer.
Dr. Olmer, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Dr. Olmer, what is your title?
Superintendent.
And in your capacity as superintendent, what is your responsibility for the district's operations, particularly as they relate to athletics?
I serve as chief executive officer of the school district, which means in the organizational chart, all employees are ultimately responsible to me. In the organizational chart, the athletic director is supervised by the high school principal, who directly reports to myself.
And when did you begin your duties as superintendent?
June 1st of 2020.
And has the employee here in question been under your supervision since the time you started?
Yes.
And how, what is her length of experience, if you will, prior to when you started in June of 2020?
I believe she was hired in August of 2019, so she was here for approximately nine months before I was.
Is it fair to say that you have had incidents of a disciplinary nature involving this employee?
Yes.
And can you tell the board when those incidents began?
The first discipline incident began, I dealt with in April of 2022.
Is there a job description that applies to the athletic director in the district?
Yes, there is.
I'm going to show you what I've marked as Exhibit A2, just to have you confirm that that is the job description?
That is correct.
And have you prepared a booklet, if you will, of information, emails, and the like that support your testimony here today?
I have.
I'm going to call this Exhibit 1, and I would like to pass these up to the board and to the hearing officer. Ms. Henry has this, including the job description, which is A2 inside. So if you could.
Thank you.
I may have extra copies here that we need to fill. Thank you. I hope everybody has, does everybody have one? Is there one extra?
Ms. Henry, have you seen this booklet prior to tonight?
I have not seen the job description prior to tonight or the booklet.
Would you look through the booklet and look at the job description? I'm going to ask you, after you've had an opportunity to do that, whether you have any objection to these documents being admitted as exhibits and put into evidence. And while she's doing that, Mr. Smith, one thing that I do not have at this point is the notice of tonight's hearing. Is there a copy of that that could be made part of the record? I didn't see it quickly coming through this booklet.
I know I sent it to you, but I can't.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Please. Dr. Laura, we'll get it.
We will secure that, Mr. Holland. Very well. I'll keep the record open if necessary to allow it to be used. And about the three-ring binder is Exhibit A1, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
So to save time, can I get an explanation of the binder?
We will be providing that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that maybe the thing to do with that is to allow the testimony to move forward with the binder, and then I'm sure Mr. Smith will move for his admission after the witness has finished testifying about it. And then if you wish to object to it, you'll have an opportunity at that point.
Yes.
Okay. Please proceed.
Dr. Olmer, are you still looking for the notice?
I'm still getting this document.
How about if we, we'll keep the record open and we'll find it, okay? So if you would, looking at Exhibit A2 first, will you confirm that this is the job description for the athletic director that applied at all relevant times to Ms. Henry?
Yes.
And calling your attention to the responsibilities and paying specific attention to items 8, 9, and 11, will you identify what those elements of her job description were?
Item 8 addresses arranging transportation for athletic events. Item 9 makes the athletic director responsible for the organization's scheduling and maintenance of the athletic calendar for events and practices. Item 11 addresses ordering and maintenance of uniforms and athletic equipment and supplies.
And turning to page 4 in the front of A1, beginning with discipline incident 4, the most recent incident, will you describe to the board the various matters that lead us here tonight?
The, I'm gonna, yeah, if you in your binder go to page 4, the discipline incident that resulted in the louder mill hearing on June 15, specific to violation of Board Policy 611, was the budgeted purchases policy. It is attached in your binder as appendix R. That policy is, gives specific direction to employees about purchases being approved by the business manager as purchasing agent by the superintendent of schools before a purchase can be placed. On or about May 1, we received a shipment of uniforms. There, there was a purchase made for girls' soccer uniforms, junior high football uniforms, basketball uniforms. That order was approved. We learned that the vendor had informed Ms. Henry that via email that the girls' soccer uniforms were not reversible. That in, that information came on September 16 of 2022. Now recall that the order arrived on May 1 of 2023. Ms. Henry responded to the vendor that, indicating that a new purchase order would be issued for the purchase of additional color of uniforms since they were not reversible. On October 20, she sent an email to the vendor permitting them to add the additional purchase of uniforms and promised a purchase order would be sent for the additional amount after approved. Board Policy 611 in your binder clearly says all purchases that are within budgetary limits may be made upon authorization of the purchasing agent, the business manager, the board secretary, and/or the superintendent. When that order was arrived, order arrived and I was made aware of it and investigated, discovered that there was no purchase order for that additional set of uniforms. Mr. Enders, I did discover an email. Mr. Enders responded. That email is in your binder as Appendix S. He asked the following questions: How did the order get placed? If it wasn't on the original purchase order, a purchase order would need to be entered and processed to pay for the additional uniforms. Prior to the purchase order being entered, a budget transfer would need to be done because soccer supplies stood at an amount that was less than what that purchase order required. He asked her to let him know what account the money was going to come from. Her response was, I don't know what happened. I will submit a new purchase order, and I will look at my budget.
And going to item 2 in discipline incident 4, will you describe that to the board and how you believe it violated board policy?
I'll call your attention to your binder. I included Board Policy 317. That is listed as an earlier appendix. Let me get you. It is Appendix B. Board Policy 317 establishes conduct of employees. Ms. Henry was directed in writing on, by myself, on January 3, 2023, that she was required to respond to every communication and I, within 48 hours after receiving the communication. I learned again, after addressing that in other disciplinary incidents, that there were continued evidence of failure to respond to communications. Specifically, there are two examples included in this disciplinary incident. One has to do with an early dismissal for athletics. A coach had asked a question on Monday, April 17, about girls needing to have lunch before an early dismissal. That same coach followed up on Friday, April 21, asking again if the girls were scheduled to have lunch before their early dismissal. During the louder mill hearing, Ms. Henry contended that she responded via phone to that coach and didn't have an email to prove that she responded. I find it hard to believe that the person would ask the question the second time four days later if they got a response. In addition, there was an incident that I addressed in that same disciplinary incident. A teacher had reached out, planning a field trip for April 18, reached out to Ms. Henry on April 12, asking for the dismissal time of the athletic event that day for students going on the field trip, indicating that they needed, they were trying to plan for the field trip to return before the athletic dismissal. That in your binder, you will see in Appendix Y, he was told the athletic dismissal was 3:10 p.m. And then four days later, on April 16, an email was sent out by Ms. Henry of athletic early dismissals indicating that the next day, when the trip was happening, field trip was happening, the athletic early dismissal was going to be 2:45, and those students would not be returning in time to attend their athletic event. During the hearing, Ms. Henry contended that things like that happen. Event times change, bus times change, and offered that it was not her job to plan field trips. It was only her job to plan athletic events, and if the students didn't return on time, they would not be able to attend.
Will you continue with item 3 on page 6 and detail the inability to carry out the essential functions of the athletic director job description?
As established in the job description, the athletic director is the person who is responsible for the organization's scheduling and calendar maintenance of all athletic events and practices. I've received a communication on April 14, or sorry, April 13 of 2023 indicating that we were intend, we were supposed to be on the schedule to play a baseball game at Danville. The Danville Athletic Director contacted his principal, who contacted Mrs. Jenkins, who is acting high school principal at Jersey Shore, to let her know that we had not showed up to play a baseball game the night before. Indicated that they believed we were coming. They had officials scheduled. They had children in uniforms. They had parents in the stands waiting to play an event. We were playing an event at Milton that night. I did discover that there was a communication with the Danville Athletic Director on July 13 of 2022, the summer prior to that spring season, where he discussed with Ms. Henry that they were going to schedule an event for April 14. In that email, admittedly, Ms. Henry does discuss, does respond, confirming a game for April 14 of 2022. But I will remind you, we're talking, this email exchange is happening in July of 2022. We did discover it wasn't, it did cause a major issue for Danville initially because they did not have a full schedule. We were the game that was going to complete their full schedule. We, there, there were required a number of games to play. We had a full schedule. Without them on the schedule, we could not play them again, which would have hurt their, their team. But we ended up having, we did admittedly end up having a cancellation later in the season, allowing us to reschedule the game with them. That should never have occurred to begin with.
Have you, Appendix AA, Dr. Larson, email on page 8, have you addressed that?
In that same disciplinary meeting, I addressed the fact that Mr. Larson, who coaches girls' softball, had come to me with a series of emails. One of them is attached as Appendix AA. The concern there, if you look at the bottom of page 89 onto page 90, there is a list there of items that he is requesting for his softball season. That list of items includes, at the bottom of page 89, or sorry, at the top of page 90, balls for practice and game balls. In my conversation with Mr. Larson and in my interview with him during the investigation, he contends that he never received any game balls or practice balls. Ms. Henry did tell me in the investigation that she went and got some for him. He contends that he had to go look for them. Either way, I find that a pattern of continuing communication issues that a coach had to come to the superintendent to discuss the fact that they didn't get softballs for the softball team.
You are recommending termination of this employee to the board?
Correct.
Are the items that you talked about just now, what I'll call disciplinary incident number four, are they the only disciplinary incidents that you have dealt with, Ms. Henry, with respect to?
No. This would be the fourth discipline incident that has come to my level. As, as you see in your binder, discipline incident one resulted in a one-day suspension. Discipline incident two resulted in a two-day suspension. And discipline incident three resulted in a four-day suspension, leading us to this point.
And the discipline incident number one was April 2022, is that correct?
That is correct.
The discipline incident two was May 3, 2022?
Correct.
And discipline incident three was November 18, 2022?
Correct.
And so we had a one-day suspension, a two-day suspension, a four-day suspension, and within approximately one year from the original one-day suspension, you are now seeking termination?
Correct.
I'm going to move the admission of exhibits A1 and A2.
Ms. Henry, do you have any objection to these exhibits being admitted into evidence?
A1 is just, is the job description, correct?
No, A1 is the free ring binder.
Okay, so A2 is the job description?
That's correct.
We only touched a couple of the appendices, so until we have gone through all the appendices, no, I cannot.
So you object to the admission of the?
At this time. Once we have opportunity to sit and look through, he only discussed R and S and double A.
That's correct. That's all we discussed. They're asking to admit all of the documents. So if you feel that you need some time to look at the other appendices to see whether you wish to object to them, I can give you that time to do so.
I do.
Okay.
May I supplement Mr. or Dr. Olmer's testimony, just to clarify that these are all business records of the district?
Yes.
Dr. Olmer, the materials that you are, that you have assembled and put in your binder, exhibit A1, are those business records of the district that are kept in the ordinary course of the district's business?
They are, and they were also included as part of the documentation that was used for each of the subsequent discipline investigations.
I have no further questions of Dr. Olmer.
Ms. Henry, about how much time do you think you'd need to look through that document? If we need to recess the hearing for a couple of minutes, I'm happy to do that. If you think it'll take a short enough period of time?
I'll just look through every, each sentence there.
Okay. I'll give you a few minutes.
That, yes, I received it on Friday.
I don't know how you want to mark that, Mr. Holland, but that is the hearing notice.
Understood. I think we'll probably mark it as A3.
I have documents that I've never seen before. And some are wrapped up in an appendix of documents I have seen.
Okay. But the question is, now that you've seen them, do you object to them being admitted into evidence? Understand that if they're admitted into evidence, that does not mean they are accepted as being true. It just means that they can be read and considered by the board. And you, of course, will have the ability to testify about the facts and about any of the documents that you wish to present testimony about. So I have to ask you again, are there portions that you wish to object to? And if so, tell me what portions and why.
And that's what I'm working on. Not G, everything but G. I've never seen G. It was not even a conversation with me.
Could you give me the page number for G, please?
It is 21 through 31.
And your basis is that you've not previously seen these?
It was, it was not, I did not see it and it was conversation, so I have no documentation to clarify what's going on.
I understand your objection. I'm going to overrule it and I will admit exhibit A1 in its entirety as part of the record. And I believe you're already moving the admission of exhibit A2?
Yes, sir.
Any objection to exhibit A2 being admitted?
Was that from?
That's the job description, yes.
Yes, I have a problem with the job description. Just note that that's the first time I've seen it. That's the first time my job description has been given to me.
You'll be able to present testimony about it and when the time comes, but at this point, exhibit A2 is admitted. And I was given a copy of the letter dated August 16th, 2023, from Mr. Olmer to you, which is marked as exhibit A3. Do you have any objection to that letter being admitted?
No.
Okay, it's admitted. With those exhibits admitted, have you finished with your direct examination of Dr. Olmer?
Yes, I have, Mr. Holland.
Ms. Henry, at this point, it's your opportunity to ask questions on cross-examination of Dr. Olmer, if you wish.
Again, I wasn't given the, I didn't know that I could do this, so give me a second to review to see if I have questions for him directly. Because I was not preparing to give, to counteract like this.
Okay, well, give it some thought and then if you wish to ask questions, you'll be permitted to do so.
Can I reserve my right, as I do my presentation, for questions at that time?
Well, no, cross-examination has to occur now. You will certainly be able to present any testimony that you want to, but to the extent that you want to ask questions of Dr. Olmer, now is the time to do it.
None, no.
Now it's, I'll give myself and the board an opportunity to ask any questions of Dr. Olmer. And I'll start with one. Dr. Olmer, on your page four through eight of your, of the exhibit A1, that refers to the discipline incident number four. And the first sentence under discipline incident number four says that you held a Louder Mill hearing on June 15th, 2023. So who was present at that hearing?
That hearing included myself, Mr. Chris Kenyon as solicitor, Serena Henry, and Justin Armbruster, who served as her Act 93 representative.
Okay. And at that time, did you, well, it's my time to ask question right now.
Okay.
So you'll get another chance.
Okay.
And you'll get the chance to present testimony as well. And at that Louder Mill hearing, did you cover the items that are listed on page four through eight?
Sorry, I missed, she's right, I did miss, Mr. Dan Strier was a president, is her attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Did you cover the items that are on pages four through eight during that Louder Mill hearing?
Yes, I did.
And after the Louder Mill hearing, was there any type of follow-up? Did you either discuss or have any correspondence with Ms. Henry about the results of the Louder Mill hearing?
Mr. Kenyon discussed follow-up items with Mr. Drier as her attorney. We received their response in writing. Additional investigation did occur and then there was a follow-up meeting.
Okay. Was there any documentation of what the final result was after the Louder Mill hearing? And if so, is it included in exhibit A1?
I'm gonna find it for you and point it out. I'm gonna find it for you and point it out. That's the file, I might not have included it, you'll have to share that.
I have my copy, Mr. Hallen, which will mark as A.
Would you show that to me, if you think we should? You've had enough to look at this, Ms. Henry, it's a letter dated August 3rd, 2023?
I received it, but I'll have comments on it later, so you might want to keep it available.
Okay, do you have any objection to it being admitted as exhibit A4?
No.
It's admitted. I have no further questions of Dr. Almer. Are there members of the board that would like to ask questions of Dr. Almer? Seeing none, Ms. Henry, if you have any questions based on the questions I asked of Dr. Almer, you may ask them now.
I do, what does it mean when you ask the question, was there any follow-up? That letter was not discussed with me, it was handed to me with the statement, we are terminating you. So there, there was no follow-up, it was just handed to you?
These will be questions for Dr. Almer.
Okay.
And I think he's basically testified that there was some further investigation after the louder mill hearing, and then this letter was given to you.
Yeah.
And if you want to ask him questions about that, you may do so.
So what was the additional information that was added after additional investigation?
That was the follow-up written comments that Mr. Dryer provided to Chris Kenyon, that were considered and followed up on with, at least with Mr. Larson, and verified with emails.
Is that the information that was provided because I asked for an extension? Is that how that was generated?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following.
In the hearing, because I didn't have the ample time to prepare, I asked for an extension.
Correct.
You're saying that the follow-up was the information that we provided as recurring, occurring from that extension?
Correct, yes, you're correct. And that in the louder mill hearing, you asked for additional time to provide information, which you did through your attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, any further questions?
No, sir, we rest. Mr. Hallen?
Yes?
I was ready to ask Dr. Almer some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It wasn't.
You may ask them now.
Okay, wonderful.
We unrest there.
Dr. Almer, Appendix S, which is the, deals with the purchase order.
Wayne, can you kind of give us a page?
Yeah, let me.
Sixty-three.
Okay, well, that's, that's the, okay, in reference to the Appendix S, but the issue of a second PO not, not being generated, does that happen, have you ever had that happen before?
I have personally never seen that happen before. If items show up on our doc, that's the first thing that our warehouse person does, is match them to a purchase order and say, where do these go?
And so that's never happened before, where items have shown up on the doc and somebody has, it's an oversight that somebody has failed to do another PO for the add-ons?
Not to my knowledge.
Second question, I know there's some emails, or Dr., Mr. Keen's name is attached to them. How would you describe Mr. Keen's involvement in this whole, the process where incidences arose? And how do you think, how do you think they were taken care of by him versus not being taken care of and they ended up on your, on your desk?
I can only speak to the fact that he served as her supervisor. So there were, I was pushing as not her direct supervisor issues back through him when they came to my attention. But as you can see from the discipline incidents, there were definitely things that were addressed that occurred. They were addressed by me after a period of time.
And why, why do you think that they ended up on your desk? As opposed to him being able to take care of them?
I would say repeated infractions end up on my desk.
So again, besides the four incidences that are listed here, there were many others? Is that how you would describe?
Yes. These four incidences are the ones that I dealt with.
Another question, does Ms. Henry's annual written performance evaluation document all of these incidences? And is there recommendations in the evaluation for improvement?
There was in spring of 2022. And I have not yet received the spring of 2023.
So you're saying that evaluation is still in process?
Correct.
Who is doing that evaluation?
I believe it was started by Mrs. Jenkins before she left in June. But it is not finalized until the fall. Most certified, most employees don't finalize until the fall when building scores are issued. So they don't come to me until they're finalized.
What is the process to finalize them? And why does it take so long?
The first, the reason it takes so long is because of building scores. The PDE does, PDE does those, and they don't issue them until the fall of the next school year.
So right now, is there a document that is specifically a written evaluation from this?
I believe it was drafted.
I speak to the process that I went through for that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Did I miss anybody else on the board that wanted to ask questions? My apologies. Okay, we rest, okay. So Mr. Smith has rested the case for the administration. That means, Ms. Henry, it's now your opportunity to present through testimony and any documents that you wish to introduce, your case. But first, I need to swear you as a witness. So would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
I have a question for you. I have multiple documents. Are you okay if I distribute those documents throughout my session? And then we do the, affirm them at the end?
Do you have copies of all the documents?
I have copies for all nine board members.
And do you have copies for Mr. Smith?
I do not. We're gonna have to make a copy of those.
Either that, or two board members will have to share. Yeah, we'll, we'll get a couple of board members sharing. Would you pass them to Mr. Smith now, so that he can look at them? And I'll take a look at them, and perhaps we can address it in advance?
I have the numbers, so I'm gonna have to pull one out of every.
Okay. Perhaps we can address before they're presented to the board whether Mr. Smith will have any objections to that.
You lost me on that statement.
Okay, he's got the same opportunity that I gave you to object to the admission of documents.
Okay.
He gave you all of his documents at the beginning, and we had you look at them. And you needed some more time, and we decided to go through them. But it may be that if he looks at them and I look at them, he'll be willing to say, I don't have any objection. Or he may say that he has objections to some of them. And if we can address that ahead of time, that will mean that you can make your presentation perhaps a bit more fluid.
Some of these documents are within here. I'm highlighting information on them.
Understood.
Where they are in that appendix, I do not know.
She's probably not going to object to most of these, and maybe not all of them. I may need to have some relevance demonstration or acknowledging. But in terms of authenticity, I don't have any objections to any of these documents.
Okay.
He wanted to see them.
So you may pass them out to board members, and then you may refer to them while you're testifying. Hopefully, I have a copy for me, but if not, you can share. Or perhaps two other board members can. And then, so why don't you pass them out? And then start your testimony once we have the documents in place. Is that how you wish to proceed?
I actually have nine copies right here.
Okay.
So if you two are still gonna share, I'll just give one to him.
Okay. And maybe you can just start by passing them at one end, and we'll pass them down. And do that at all. Are they numbered on the documents themselves?
No, they are not.
Okay.
I have them, I have them where I want them in my testimony, to be passed out.
Okay, all right, well then, we'll have you pass them out when you get to them. And we'll number them as you do. And you can just bring the full set up
Yep.
to this side of the table, and we'll pass them out at that.
Okay.
And we will mark this document as H for Henry, H1.
Okay. So to, I'm going off with the August 3rd letter that was presented earlier to me from the louder mill hearing. The letter that I said I did receive, but was not re, that I questioned the additional information on. This is, in this, we just got, he discussed and put into evidence as pages one through eight. I think that was it.
Right.
So most of this refers to pages one through eight. The information I am going to present to you.
And actually, it may be four through eight, because the louder mill hearing is discipline incident number four, which I think starts on page four.
My paperwork, the August 3rd paper
Ah, I see.
starts, and I, this is what I used as my template. So it starts with the August 3rd information that I can add, that I can give you more details on.
I understand that. I don't know that the board, the board right now doesn't have copies of exhibit A4 though, so.
It goes into the investigation findings and.
Okay, so we have exhibit H1, tell us what you want us to know about that.
Okay, I'm, I'll get to you on that, okay? It's coming, we'll just hang on to it for a second. So first of all, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to provide my side of the story for you. Because this has been the first time I've had this opportunity in my discipline to provide an appeal process. All the rest of my disciplines, I did send to the PHRC, because there was no appeal process. I confirmed that with a high school principal and the HR person in the admin voting, and neither one of them could find any appeal process. So I appreciate you being able to hear this. And that now you might have an understanding of why there are PHRC complaints. So to start with this most recent set of discipline, on Monday, June 12th, I was presented with an email at 4:35 in the evening from, of a notification of a meeting for June 15th at 1 o'clock. Within two hours, I sent a response email of that same evening on June 12th, asking for detailed information. Dr. Almer responded to that email on Wednesday, June 14th, at 4:30 in the afternoon with multiple documents, which are in your finder, okay? And at 4:30 in the evening. Again, the meeting was Thursday at 1 o'clock. So during that meeting, I asked for an extension, because I had less than 24 hours with this information to provide the information back, to do any research on it. And then that's where, in that extension, that is where I was, the additional information was provided, as demonstrated earlier on the document. For my attorney, or Mr. Kenyon was given, gave us a week to submit additional information after we had a chance to go back and look onto some information. For this hearing, I was not notified until mail. The letter was dated on the 16th, I received it on the 18th. So I did not receive official information that I was granted this hearing. But prior to that, I received an email that my salary was already paid out as a final salary. So I assumed I wasn't getting a hearing, because I had no notification at that point. But HR had already reached out to me and said I, we have paid out the final salary. So items in question, that gets us to where we are. The violation of Board Policy 611 of purchases budgeted. This is the PO, this is the second PO that Dr. Almer and Mr. Enders signed and approved. When this became an issue of the items were received and I needed an additional PO for this, I contacted Mr. Enders and asked, how do we handle this? And at that point, I was told three to second PO, which I did, which you're looking at in front of you. Both of those two. Both of those two signed it, as you see on the bottom there. They both signed it, approved it. At no point during any conversation in the hands of Mr. Enders or Mr. Almer or Dr. Almer, was I ever informed that this could not be done. I was not told that you can't ever do this. There was never any discussion of, you know, you can't do this. So I didn't know I couldn't do this until I received my discipline letter in June. So it wasn't a problem until I received my discipline letter in June. Looking at Board Policy 611, this doesn't apply. These items were budgeted in the budget that you approved, June of '22. It's uniform items. They were purchased items, budgeted. They were in my presentation to the board for my athletic budget presentation in March of '22. There was, it was not additional purchases. It's part of the purchase of uniforms. There was no additional cost. There was an additional cost because there was additional items that, but they weren't added as an additional purchase. They were added as the purchase of those uniforms. So the original PO was missing line items. I don't, it was not, it didn't have all the pieces to it, okay? But that's how the additional items came about to be run on, run as the same uniforms through everything, not costing, to cost additional shipping and handling. I told the vendor I would get them an additional PO. So the purchase, the items came in before I got a chance to sit down and get the additional PO and find out the information on how to do that, okay? So, but again, I was never told I could not do this. I didn't know that this, this, there was an issue here until it was in my disciplinary letter. And that's your documentation of the signed PO. They went ahead and signed it and processed it, but never once came to me until June 15th that these, that this could not be done. Can I answer his question? He presented a question, or do I have to wait till I'm done to come back and present?
You can testify-
Because it pertains to this.
You can testify about things that you want to testify about because of his question. You're not really answering his question, but you can, you can address whatever issues you want that are relevant.
There are services rendered within the district and an invoice is received by the district without a PO. I know of a $9,000 invoice received by the district last May-June time period that did not have a PO to it. So that answers your question, yes. And I've been told it happens all the time.
I'm going to object to that as hearsay.
I'm going to abstain, or I'm going to grant that objection. Hearsay is sometimes permitted in administrative hearings, but you would at least have to identify more completely who you've been told things by and have to have some direct relations. So I'm going to object, or I'm going to sustain the objection.
Again, I wasn't told I could have witnesses, so...
Continue with your testimony, please.
All right. Violation of Board Policy 317, conduct and disciplinary procedures. All right. Nope, not yet. This one comes back. For my very first discipline that I was given, I had no representation. The letter that was given to me was taken back from me, handwritten on it, or the discipline letter number one that was handwritten to me in a meeting where I had no representation. In that meeting was Dr. Dady, Dr. Almer, and myself. My supervisor was in his office two doors down and not invited to this meeting. I was handed discipline and during that, the paper was taken back and signed unpaid on it and then returned to me. So the documentation wasn't even complete when it was handed to me. It was altered in my presence with no representation during that meeting. And that was the first disciplinary hearing, or that was the first discipline of the one day. Because shifting backwards, the previous day, I was handed a letter with no witnesses, no stop to explain what this letter was. It was a meeting for disciplinary, I don't remember the title of the hearing. It was the first disciplinary hearing letter of a meeting for the next day. And it was just handed to me as I passed by the printer. Dr. Almer pulled up the printer, said, "I'm sending this to your supervisor." I put it in my arms and I walked out the door. I could literally tell you I never received it because there was no witnesses and I never signed for anything. It was just passed by here, and you do it all the time. I did not go to that meeting. I did not see on the meeting, I did not see the time. There was a whole bunch of times and dates and everything within that letter. And I did not go to the meeting at 10 o'clock. When Dr. Dady and Mr. Almer, or Dr. Almer showed up at my office at 11 o'clock after they typed up the disciplinary here, or the disciplinary letter of one day suspension, and they showed up at my office and I said, "Okay, wait here. We'll go over here for this meeting," because I didn't have room in my office. So we went to the conference room, closed the door, the three of us. He hands me this letter, writes unpaid on it, hands it back to me. One day suspension for missing that meeting. That could have all been solved with, rather than checking my key fob of when I keyed into the building, which is not accurate because before I, before I step into the building in the fall and spring, I walk my fields to make sure they're playable for that day. So my day starts before I key into a building. Because I'm walking the softball field, I'm walking the soccer field to make sure they're available for play. Then I key into the building. I go in and the time was taken to write up this disciplinary letter, look up my key fob into the building, and approach me with this one day discipline. So, yes, I did not attend that meeting. I will admit I did not attend that meeting, okay? But it could have easily been, it could have easily been, "Hey, we're here for this meeting with a phone call" and said, "You're here. We're here for this meeting. Where are you?" It was more important to discipline me with a one day discipline. And the meeting in the letter also, it did not have a location on it. So it had a time, but it did not have the location. So I didn't know where I was going for the meeting anyhow. Please note that any discipline I received, I got to pick the days of disciplines so that they fit the athletic schedule, so there was no home event. They were not, they were worked around when all the teams threw away and there was no home events. So it was a pick and choose of when I could take my discipline. That was discipline number one. Discipline number two was, there was a directive given to me for answering phone calls within 48 hours. This directive was... This was the directive. And you will see that the directive was for 48 hours listed as voicemails and phone calls. I was disciplined for not answering email within 48 hours according to the directive. The directive does not state emails.
This, we're going to mark as exhibit H2. It's an email dated January 12th, 2022. You might continue.
Okay. So I received discipline of suspended days, no pay for a directive that was not given to me. Discipline number three. When that, when the discipline number three came along, I defended it completely. I provided the documentation. Then I responded within 48 hours. I defended every case in it. And other administrators approached Dr. Almer and stated that they were, they didn't agree with this and that I defended these items.
I've kind of jacked on the basis of hearsay, yeah?
Yes, you can't talk about what other administrators may have said to Dr. Almer.
I-
You have to address things from your own knowledge about-
I cannot bring those people as witnesses because they are obligated due to their contracts at the open house tonight.
Understood. The objection is still sustained.
And it was my Act 93 representative. So these items are still defended. Statement was made that I was, the discipline still stands. Discipline number four. Again, the directive, the directive has now changed. Originally, it was made for voicemails and phone calls and I was disciplined. I was disciplined for it when I defended it. And now the third time, I'm being disciplined for it because I made a phone call rather than emailing the person back directly. Because the details were more than what it would take me time to respond to the email. So instead of sitting down and typing out a very long email, I picked up the phone and called the coach and talked to him over it that. And the statement that Dr. Almer made, I, it's hard for him to believe, is an opinion. Moving on to the inability to carry out the essential job functions. This was referred to as a game with Danville where I had a clerical error and the Danville game, I responded to the email July of '22, scheduling a game for April of '22. So I had a clerical error of the wrong year and dated it back the wrong year when I sent them the email back. That's one game out of 365 that I organized for the '22-'23 school year. So that percentage of being able to do that job function is 99.7%. I admit, I confirmed the wrong date with them. Now, on a weekly basis, on Thursdays, I pull out the weekly schedule for the next week and I email that schedule with departure, dismissal, start times, if the game's home or away. That information is emailed out to every school that we're going to participate with the following week. And it's done on Thursdays. I email it out. I ask for that school to confirm the date, time, and the location of these games. If there's anything important that the, that the school needs to know, maybe senior night, or I've added construction on 2/20, if you're traveling through 2/20. That, that information is sent out on Thursdays to all schools that you participate with on the following week, asking for their confirmation. They confirm that. Danville was not my home game. It was not listed on there. Danville did not contact me at all to confirm that I was going there that week. Milton reached out, confirmed that I was going with them. And in addition to me sending that email, other schools do that. Danville's not wanting to do that. Other schools do that, send back that information. I always, even though I send mine back, I always confirm back with them. So it's kind of double. If Milton sends me their schedule, yep, I confirm, we're doing it. Even though I sent them my confirmation, I send it back and forth to them also. Part of, as a home event, we are obligated to provide officials. So we take our schedule, we send it off to who we call the assigner. The PHAC hires a person to schedule those, to schedule the officials for those games. So when you put your schedule together, you send all that to the assigner. The assigner did not recognize that he was, that my teams were scheduled in two spots at the same time. You put it into a system called Arbiter. Arbiter has a system that is supposed to mark when that shows up. The computer system didn't catch that our team was going in two places. There's multiple things that went wrong in the fact of confirming this. I'll admit, I made the mistake of putting the wrong date on the email when I sent it back to them. But there's a lot of things that should have flagged that we were going to Danville that day and it did not. So it actually comes down to a clerical error that day when I sent out that. And here is an email. This can be document number three. This was a disciplinary letter that was given to me by Dr. Almer. As you look at the top, it is dated January 11th of 2022. It referenced the directive that was given to me the next day, January 12th of 2022. And as you read it, the discipline was issued September of '22. There's a clerical error at the top. The date should have been January 11th, 2023. These are human mistakes of clerical errors that happen. I'm not the only one who does it. Did everyone get one? I should have had a copy of this.
Okay, this is marked as exhibit H3.
So continuing with the essential job functions, that is, when you're looking at 365 games, that's one game out of the entire school year. So that answers, yes, I do carry out my essential job functions. The field trip issues. As you read down through my job description, was everybody given a copy of my job description?
Yes.
Okay. As you read down through it, we were referencing number eight. Arranges transportation for all athletic contests. Yes, I do that. The field trip is not an athletic event. I work around a lot of events at the high school so our students have these opportunities. I work around field trips. I work around homecoming parade. I work around FBLA. There's a lot of things that always come up that I work around outside of athletics. But if you're looking at my job description, it says athletic events. I do provide transportation for all those events to the point where my coaches do not have to worry if a bus is showing up. And that's part of the 365 events that I took care of last year. In communication with the field trip, the teacher reached out, and I gave them the times and the dates, knowing I was going to see them on Torresville A.D. on that Monday. I talked to her and I asked, I said, hey, can we change this date? Or can we bump the time back? And we'll do that a lot of times for schools, to help and adjust to make these things happen. I asked, hey, can we bump it back just a few minutes, so we can leave just a few minutes later, so these kids can get off the bus? We're going to get them off the bus and right onto the sports bus and get them out of here as soon as we can. Are you okay if we're just, you know, we'll adjust the start, the warm-up time, and adjust if we can give us 10 minutes adjustment? And she's like, yeah, go ahead. Just let me know what's happening. Just confirm that back with me. I reached out to Coach, and at that point, Coach said, parents have already figured it out. Okay? So I reached out to my Torresville, and I was like, it's as we planned. Don't change anything. So the teacher went and asked for Mr. Armbruster's help without, while I'm working on it on one end and a whole different avenue that the teacher doesn't see to make this happen, went around me without communicating with me, then he went around me to have Mr. Armbruster work it out with the parents. So that's how he got involved in this situation. Now, this is documentation from, the communication that was given within the hearing, which is different from what's in on page seven. That's different from what it is on page seven. This was the documentation that was given to me, that I'm passing out to you right now. Page seven is not the same information that I was given.
This will call exhibit H4.
If you look at the paperwork that was given to me, the directive is now 24 hours. On page seven, the information you were giving, were given, the documentation states it was 48 hours. So did the directive change, or is it a clerical error? Because this is the first time I'm seeing it stated as 48 hours. So I'm assuming it was changed since the documentation was given to me at 24 hours. The next document is new information. That you wanted to see.
I'm not sure I understand. Is that a document, Mr. Smith?
Most of my documents-
Has already seen?
Most of my documents are within the binder.
Okay.
This is something that I did with, as an email and communication with my coaches that wanted to be in the binder, and that's what I meant by this is documentation that you wouldn't have seen.
Okay. This one will be exhibit H5.
I have it listed as four. It could be five, and you're five. Insurance, ordering and maintenance of uniforms, all equipment, athletic equipment and supplies. This is an email, what you're receiving is an email that goes out every September to all the head coaches, who are the coaches who provide their wish lists of items to create my budget. So these are the general supplies that if a coach wants a certain net or a certain training tool, or sees that they want to replace equipment, this is how they communicate this with me. Through this letter, when I'm working on the budget. So they get this email around September, and they complete it, and it has a deadline on it that is returned to me. And this is how I work on items for putting in my budget. Softball coach never returns these to me. So this would be the process. If he wants equipment, this is how he would do it. He would go through and does it. Instead, he gives me, prints me out stuff he wants from a certain vendor and hands it to me. Here, this is the equipment I want. Not following protocol as all the other coaches would. Which then requires additional work. If he wants these items, I have to find, make sure there's money in the budget before I can order them, go through the process of getting quotes from various vendors, or if I have the exact item he wants, get quotes from that vendor, and then process the purchase order. It goes through the purchase order process, comes in as they are ordered. So that is how I create my budget. That is how we order equipment. And that's how it gets on bid items or on the Keystone bid. Now, when I walked in the door at Jersey Shore in 2019, there were 42 dozen softballs upstairs in my storage room. I was not ordering softballs because we didn't need them. But no, or yes, correct, I did not order softballs because we had them in stock. I've tried, I had enormous amounts of tennis balls and baseballs and softballs, and there's still tons and tons of softballs upstairs. So I don't try to excessively spend. That was an area where I did, I had the materials. I was not ordering them. So if I went and got the softballs for Coach, or if Coach went upstairs, every time they turn equipment in upstairs and grab the softballs, I don't honestly remember how that happened. But I did not order them because we had plenty of stock of them. Part of the maintenance of equipment, I created a sign-up sheet for all equipment that the coaches are to be using, that the students sign. It's a one front page. Cindy helped me work it so it's all on one page and documents what they sign out. So all I have to do is copy that card, send it to the parents. This is what you owe us. This is the card that was signed out on you. So I did implement that in part of being here at Jersey Shore. So according to my paperwork that I was given August 3, that would conclude all the items on that list as disciplinary. As a quick review, 611 did not apply. Lack of communication in 713, I've explained that. And the essential job, just doing my job to the job description? Yes, I do perform the duties to my job description. Next, there was, so as you read through this and move into other things, and you were given the first disciplinary letter where it was handwritten on and there was no writtennesses. The second disciplinary letter was issued for an item, a directive that I was not given. The third item was I defended, or the third discipline, I defended everything in that hearing that we had had, and I was still disciplined. And now this one, you have the documentation that again, the directive has changed now to be 24 hours. So it clearly shows a pattern of, we're going to change the directive to fit the discipline. So the investigating findings that was listed on my paperwork, we use that. You were given the evidence that without being told that I could not do, that I couldn't go, because they couldn't find a reason that I could not do the second purchase order of the original date. Right. I was not told in that process. I was told, it became a discipline issue and not brought to my attention prior to being disciplined for it. The lack of communication. I communicate daily with the high school principal since his office is right next door from mine. We would pop in and out of office as we walked by. Hey, I'm working on this. I'm doing this. Did you check on this? And that conversation went both ways. So there was daily communication multiple times through the day with the high school principal while we were in the building on what was happening and what, if there were any concerns. But the communication is constant here. There was daily communication with coaches. I send out a daily email called Bulldog in Action. When I first started here, I requested to have the permission appended to the district staff. And at that point, the superintendent, not Dr. Almer, the superintendent, had given me permission to send that to the district staff. It's labeled Bulldog in Action. It is a chart that provides dismissal times, departure times, any important information, any single athletes or two or three athletes are being dismissed and not a whole team, anything. The purpose of the email is to inform the teachers in the building pretty much when dismissal can happen. So a student is not walking up, hey, I get out at 1 o'clock today. No, you don't dismiss till 2:30. So that's the purpose behind it. But sending it to the district staff intention was to provide the entire district with what was going on in sports, that they knew if it was a home game and away game, who was playing and what was going on. So that was my daily communication out to the district. Because I'm labeled in that district email staff, that email flips back and comes into my inbox. I take that email that comes back to my inbox, and now I forward it to Martin's Transportation, Tusquehanna Transportation, and my coaches that are in season for that group. Occasionally, I send it to all athletic coaches because there's information that I have to pass on. But a lot of times, it just goes to the coaches that are in season that time. So the coaches are seeing confirmation of all their games that day, and it's listed of that day and the next day. So they have, they know what's going on at least two days in a snapshot in an email they receive every day. Weekly communications with the opponents, I explained that on Thursdays, how I send that out to the opponents to get confirmation back. I have, in that same process, but not including the opponents, I send out an email weekly to the maintenance and buildings and grounds directors. They also have an upcoming view of what's going on. To the building custodians at the high school and the middle school because they need to know what's going on in their building. I send it occasionally to an elementary school custodian if it's necessary. So if I need to move a team to JSV for the gym space, I'll add that custodian on to it. So this is weekly communication that goes on to all of them. And the head of security also gets that. The seasonal team schedules confirmations, where you pull up the entire season and send it to, so if you're pulling up a whole season of boys soccer, you send that email out to everyone prior to the season to confirm it. That is something that was being incorporated this coming school year. So in addition to everything else, I was going to add that into this coming school year, since I have not been here in August, did not get that. I'm sorry. I apologize. It didn't get marked off on my list of being done. It might be done. Okay? I have no knowledge of that. I confirm officials. I receive emails that confirm officials. I look at my Arbiter to make sure that my payment stubs are correct with the officials that are in the game, so I have officials for every game. One thing I have done is taken, worrying about officials, worrying about transportation, worrying about game staff. I've taken that worry from my coaches, so all they have to do is coach. And when a coach, all it have to do is coach, it benefits our students. So that's the general communication that goes out to the district, that goes weekly communications that I do regularly as standard practice of what I do. Meeting my job description, my evaluations. I have three evaluations on file. And this is including the one that will be finalized here that we did this spring, be finalized in the fall. I have a distinguished that was done by the high school principal. I have a satisfactory, which was done by the high school principal, and input from Dr. Almer. I have a distinguished done by the high school principal. The high school principal has found me to be distinguished in my job duties. In all of my discipline, my high school principal has not been included in the process. He found out because I called him and said, I've been given days off with no pay. He was not consulted. So his opinions provided have not been given as input. According to PIAAA, the high school principal, because we are a member of PIAAA, the high school principal is in charge of athletics. They have the right to designate someone. That's how your athletic director position comes available. Then, so PIAAA recognizes that the high school principal is responsible for me. The flow chart of the organizational chart recognizes the high school principal as my supervisor. Why was he not included in the knowledge of my discipline? I make decisions in the athletic department on, the first thing, is it a safety problem? Or is it safe? Is it a safety concern? Is it a risk of liability? That's the first thing I always look at when I make any decisions for the athletic department. Secondly, I put in Title IX. Does it meet the Title IX, or does it not? And the third item I add to it, is this an opportunity for our students? This document recognizes the award I received from the NIAAAA in completing this letter. I do not know if you received this letter, if this is the first time you are seeing this.
This will be exhibit H6.
You may be aware that I won an award. Or I did not win the award. I earned the award because I submitted nearly 3,000 pages of documentation in- because I submitted nearly 3,000 pages of documentation in making our athletic department better. And it was submitted, graded, so there was no grade less than a 94%, which achieved the exemplary status for our athletic department. Now, that award goes to me. That is mine and is connected to the athletic department that I am connected to. If I am dismissed, Jersey Shore will need to vote for my vote. This letter was sent to Dr. Olmer, the high school principal, and to myself in July, mid-July. If this is the first time you've seen it, Dr. Olmer had it in his calendar. Can I, can I ask the board if this is the first time they've seen this?
No, you are not permitted to ask the board members questions.
Okay. Not knowing that answer, if this is the first time you've seen it or not, you would have presented that information with a teacher who would have earned a teacher of the year award. This is a national award. There are only four other athletic directors in the state that can do it here. There's only six athletic departments in the game that have earned this stat. It is quite unique that I have put together to then set up a team. And that comes back to being better at performing my job duties. There was a point where in, the meeting in May, February, that I explained to Dr. Olmer, I was no longer answering my phone if Mark Wall was calling me. I was not answering my phone in a private situation where he was calling me because I got tired of being yelled at over the phone.
May I ask for an offer proof as to relevance on this? Yes.
This is part of performing my job.
Well.
I have to communicate with the buildings and grounds director to perform my job.
Okay, I'm not sure if he's Mark Wall.
He is the buildings and grounds director, I apologize for that. He is the buildings and grounds director and there have been multiple times that I have been, to perform my job, I have been, we communicate and he has called me, he has called me a bitch, he has called, he has yelled at me over the phone.
And I guess getting back to Mr. Smith's point, I think he may be seeking to object to the testimony along this line, is that what your intention is, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. Well, there's documentation of this happening within the school district.
The question is, how is what Mr. Wall may or may not say to you relevant to your discipline and whether you should?
Because I was refusing to answer my phone in a private situation. If I was in my office by myself or if I was called where I had no witnesses, I was not answering my phone to do my job duties by this individual because he has created a hostile work environment. So there's a point where I am not able to provide, do my job function because of another individual within this whole district.
And from my recollection, your communication or lack of communication with Mr. Wall was not something that you were disciplined in, is that correct?
No, no, because I always made sure there was a witness when I answered the phone.
Right. So based upon that, I'm inclined to sustain the objection because it's not relevant to the charges that have been brought against you seeking your dismissal. So I will sustain the objection to any testimony about the communication or lack thereof between the board.
Yes, that's the next document. Job description, organizes and administers a total program of athletic extracurricular athletics. I do this. My job, performing my job at the level I do creates the success within our teams because I've taken away all the issues that, I don't, we don't miss buses, we don't miss officials, I've taken the what ifs and the wondering and the worrying away from the coaches for them to coach and that's how the success has happened.
And if I may interrupt for a second, the document you just presented will be marked as exhibit H7. Continue, please.
You may have seen this, you may not have seen this. When I talked to a board member previously, you had not seen this. I brought it to Dr. Olmer's attention in a weekly update and I was told that he was going to send that to the board that week. So if you have not received it, I was told you already have. And that is our success for this year, which comes down to 15 teams. 12 of those teams went postseason, 10 of our teams at Jersey Shore participated in state playoffs. That has been the most successful season our athletic department has had ever on record. I've asked multiple times in the questions of being able to do my job, I've asked multiple times that the board has shadowed me, that I open the door up, please come and walk with me, see what I do, because people question, what do I actually do? I don't have a problem showing you what I do, walk with me. And every time I put that out there with Dr. Olmer, he says, no, 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 you don't want them to do that. So I don't know if you've ever been asked or if you've ever been approached, I've invited you to coaches meetings.
I can object to this as not relevant to the disciplinary events issue. Yes, can you explain how, how this issue is relevant to the charges that have brought us here for your removal as?
It states that I'm inadequate at doing my job, I have made multiple attempts for the board to become knowledgeable of what I do and that's where this is leading. Because it always comes back to me, the board, the board, the board, the board, the board. So conversations to me is the board knows everything.
Well, what the board will know about this case is the evidence that's presented tonight. I think you've testified that you've requested that Dr. Olmer allow board members to shadow you and he's turned those requests down. I'm going to admit that much of the testimony, but I don't think anything further on that topic should be permitted.
I mean, all my deadlines. The athletic department is one of the most liability-laden departments within a school district. And I meet all the PIAA requirements, eligibility and roster. I meet activity to state report deadlines. I meet all my budget deadlines, bid deadlines, the evaluation deadlines that you receive in your board meetings, any presentation requests that I do for the board, I submit those. The power rating that is done required by district board for our teams, I do those, all done in a timely manner, on time with a deadline. Any PIAA documents of transfer requests, game suspensions, or eligibility numbers are all turned in to PIAA and regulated. I don't miss those. Maybe that's why they're not, let's see.
That's the same.
We have 49 different teams and schedules, 58 paid coaches, numerous volunteers, 38 delivery staff, one full-time trainer, one part-time contracted trainer, which is a total of 97 employees and 485 athletes. I conduct 365 games a year. My accuracy is 99.7% for successful games out of the year. My department is the forefront of the school district because when everybody comes to an event, that's why they come to a school district. People visit your school district for athletic events, they usually don't tell for anything. So handling all of that and completing the deadlines, I do perform the job functions of my, or do perform the functions of my job. And the list I just gave you does not include the 24/7 of emails, text messages, phone calls, voicemails, and the scrutiny and intimidation of these discipline letters. I work with all the community groups, YMCA using the natatorium, use wrestling, using JSE in the high school building at times, youth football occasionally needs to use our facilities to keep up practices and what usually comes and visits our games, and youth basketball is trying to find enough space in the limited space we have in the stadium. You are aware of the evaluations that I conduct three times a year for coaches, four times a year technically, fall has two sessions, and they're always turned in on time and I go out of my way to make sure they're with 100% participation. I create and, or create the. I hold and conduct annual, semi-annual, seasonal and monthly meetings for coaches, parents and student athletes. Coaches meetings are conducted preseason, or the fall season's coaches meeting did not occur this year because I was dismissed before it happened, it was scheduled to happen. It did not occur by me, again, I don't know if it occurred or not. In that meeting, there's four times a year with that, middle school basketball, winter sports and spring sports. That reviews all the guidelines a coach needs to stick to, it provides their schedules, it provides any new information that they need to know about their season, it just gives reviews so that they know what they have to do. Monthly coaches meetings are run September through May. Each coach is required, or each coach's meeting requires a different topic that can be anywhere from NIL information to coaches' non-herbal language interactions with athletes, it can be building character techniques, team captain pressures. These meetings are designed on like what's happening in the athletic world, what could impact our athletics, or ways to build better character within our athletes so that there's better communication between the coach and the athlete. These are done on a monthly basis. There's times where that has to change because after their schedule's been higher than the year, I have to adapt when a game is scheduled that I can't be, that I can't conduct this meeting. So occasionally, I will run a do-it-yourself meeting, I give them a course from NFHS, make them require them to do that for that meeting, have them do that for that meeting. It keeps that communication open and keep our professional development and character for our coaches. Annual booster meeting, we just recently reviewed and revised the handbook for the booster clubs.
Mr. Holland, again, we're getting into areas that try to include the discipline and question.
The discipline and question is the inability to do my job.
And areas of discipline there.
I'm referring to items that I am doing in my job.
I think there is relevance to demonstrating how you perform your job. At the same time, I think much of what you're saying is a 805. I don't know how much longer you think you need to present this case, but I think you've made the point reasonably well that you feel that there are many items in your job description that you haven't been disciplined for and that you do. So I guess I counsel you that you might be wise to try to critique about highlighting those areas.
I will. I will summarize the job description items and leave it, if you have a different question, probably they'll, they get to ask me it forever.
They will be given enough time to ask you that.
Review and implement procedures, guidelines and annuals for the athletic department. I'm constantly updating the handbook. When I handed the handbook to the new high school principal, he said, it is comprehensive. And that's what you want, because the more comprehensive your handbook is, the less liability leaks into it. Developing a strong relationship with the local media, I do have a strong relationship with the radio stations and the media. Social media is on my goal to be better at. So. It has, but I also don't have access to post-social media. The arranging transportation for athletic events, that was a discipline area too. So when you're scheduling 365 events in the year, about half of those are transportation. I explained the bulldogs in action, how I communicate with both bus companies every day and my coaches do not have to worry that they have buses. They're constantly showing up. That was a complaint about the coaches, the coaches had prior to me being here is we never knew if we had a bus, we, they would show up sometimes later than necessary, I communicate that all with the coaches. Responsibilities and scheduling and the calendar. My, my program that I use is purchased by the P-HAC. So the software is actually purchased by the P-HAC and used by our school district. I handle all the event scheduling in that, when you schedule an event, home or away, all the details are submitted into that program. It is seen by the public. Now, I only put events on, I don't put practices for the public to see. I, but I use that as our guidelines for, or as our tool for scheduling all our games. I complete the budget, complete it on time. You've seen the process for ordering. I order as much as I can on the Keystone Bid that we do mid-October, it's due mid-October and I do as much as I can through that to, to save us money because it's purchased and bought and to keep us in regulation because when you order it on the Keystone Bid, they guarantee that they are going to provide the necessary sports falls that are required by PIAA. So they take that information from PIA to order those for the team. So I purchase as much as that, as I can on that because it's going to meet those regulations. And that's usually a lot of regular equipment that we use. Most, a lot of it comes down to it's your sports balls that each team uses. I handle all the funds for ticket sales. I am constantly, as I stated earlier, I use Title IX as when I'm making a decision to make sure we meet those guidelines. The annual report due each year is turned in on time. I do it in the month of August. Obstacles, obstacles that run into performing my job performance. Am I going to be able to present them?
Well, why don't you try to summarize what you intend to present? Now, why is relevant to whether the discipline charges are per order now?
The, I have an email that was sent to me. And this is just an example of the obstacles that I overcome to do my job. And one of them is from the Buildings and Grounds Director. When I asked for something that I need to order to do my job, field paint. And this field, I asked for an inventory of what field paint I have so that I can order field paint. He responds back to me with the information of, "You have so many gallons of field paint and you have so many ounces of aerosol paint." The cans had to have been counted to give me that answer. That was not necessary to provide that information.
Again, I, I think this is getting into an issue of somebody else's job performance and not your job performance. And I don't see any connection between the field paint...
I didn't need this information to do my job.
I, I don't see any connection between the field paint and the way it was identified and any of the charges that were brought against you. So I'm anticipating an objection to this. Yes. Document which will mark as Exhibit H8. But I'm going to sustain the objection to that document because it has to do with somebody else's job performance, not your job. So to the extent that you're seeking to testify about obstacles that are like that, no, I'm not going to permit you to go into that. If there are other obstacles that do relate to the charges that have been brought, then yes, I think those would be relevant.
I am, the discipline references policy 317. And I am going to reference policy 317 when I, back to being yelled at over the phone, that the...
You were talking about the incident with Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Okay, well, again, I've sustained the objection to that. And the fact that it relates to policy 317 suggests that that's a suggestion that he might be violating that policy, but not directly addressing whether you violated that policy. And whether you violated that policy is the issue that's before the board.
Moving on to the letter that I have received was past findings or past discipline. That's this documentation. This is, this is the documentation of the original first discipline where the documentation was handwritten in front of me and not fully... It was adjusted to me in the meeting that I had no representation.
Okay, this will be marked as Exhibit H9. And I think you've already testified about this. Is there anything else that you want to testify about with respect to H9?
What, how did you label that one?
H9.
Thank you. I gave you the details on that. The two-day suspension I was given because the communication that was given to me was not, I was given discipline for what was not on the directive. Now you can see with this documentation that the PHRC complaints were necessary. I had no appeal process. I had, directives were changed to fit the discipline. I do my job to benefit our athletes and our students. But if they're an athlete or not, they know who I am. They communicate with me because I care about them. I provide them with the events. I include these athletes in multiple things I do in performing my job. At the end of the day, these items that I am being disciplined for are disputable.
I'm gonna object. We're now in the closing argument and not testimony.
That's where I am.
Okay, well, you'll have an opportunity to make a closing argument after all the testimony is in.
Okay.
And is there anything else that you'd like to present with respect to the facts involved surrounding your discipline and the effort to remove you from your position? Mr. Schmidt, do you have any questions on cross-examining?
Yes, I'm gonna try, try to be very brief and focused. Ms. Henry, the purchase of the soccer uniforms. You testified essentially that that wasn't an issue because there was an approved purchase order, correct?
I testified that there was a purchase order created and sent to the vendor. The additional items that I told the vendor to purchase are budgeted items, approved in the budget. And then the second purchase order was signed by both Dr. Almer and by the business manager.
And, and the original purchase order was processed in the September, October 2022 period, correct?
Correct.
And the signed purchase order came after the goods were delivered in May of 2023, is that correct?
The second purchase order was, correct.
And if you look at page sixty-five and sixty-six of Administration A1, do you acknowledge receiving an email from Mr. Enders asking three questions? How did this order get placed if it wasn't on the original PO? A PO will be, will need to be entered and processed to pay for these jerseys. And prior to the PO being entered, a budget transfer will need to be done because soccer supplies only has one dollar, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents available. Did you receive that?
I, it says I did.
Well, if you look at page sixty-five, is that an email from you responding to Mr. Enders?
It is.
And do you say in response to his questions, number one, "I don't know what happened." Number two, "I will submit a PO." And number three, "I will look at the budget."
And I did. And I talked to him about it on where the purchase order needed to, that there's items in that account that were wrong and that they needed to be corrected to purchase, put them in the correct line item of six-ten sports, general supplies for soccer.
Is there an email that, that you communicated that?
No, I told him when I was in the office with him.
And the point is, this wasn't in your budget because there had to be a budget transfer, correct?
These items were approved on the final budget because they were presented in my budget presentation. It did not belong in that, such as field paint. Field paint has its own budget item or budget line item. And so these field paint items were what was using up the budget amounts. And I had said to him, I said, "The field paint..."
Email from Mr. Larson on April seventeen at twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three at eight nineteen PM asking about lunches for certain students who would be performing athletic events?
Yes, I received that.
And then do you acknowledge receiving another email four days later on April twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, highlighting that the girls need early lunch and we will only be taking the varsity girls?
So that had, that...
Can you answer my question, yes or no? Did you get that email?
I did.
And it's your testimony that you contacted Mr. Larson by phone in between April seventeen and April twenty-one?
I did.
In terms of the softball equipment and the softballs in the storage area, I think you testified that you issued a directive to coaches, a budget directive, it was H5, asking for information?
I do it every year.
If you look at page eighty-nine and ninety of Exhibit A1, and you look at the bottom of page eighty-nine, do you see an email from Mr. Larson dated May twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two to you indicating a need for equipment for the upcoming season to include four dozen game balls and other softball-related material?
And what's your question?
Did you receive that email?
Yes.
And did it indicate to you that he wanted to have this equipment for the next season?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions at this time.
Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Henry?
I do.
Phone calls, coaches. Have you ever documented on paper or in emails or saved any of those messages to your phone?
No.
Okay.
The only documentation would be a text message that you could look up, not a verbal phone call, unless you looked up a phone call history from the phone.
Okay. Can you clarify exactly what you mean when you say that you felt the administration was changing the directives to fit the discipline? I'm a little unclear on what you exactly mean by that.
So the first, the discipline letter that you received stated that the discipline was for, or that the directive was stated as voicemails and phone calls. I was disciplined for emails. I was, I was disciplined according to that directive for emails that was not listed in that directive.
Okay.
Then I was disciplined for providing the evidence that I met that directive. So I defended that, yes, I sent the email that was sent within forty-eight hours. In fact, it's in your book. To, within forty-eight hours. I was still disciplined.
Okay.
And then the discipline in the paper that I gave you states the directive is now twenty-four hours. So it changed to fit or tried to apply to the discipline.
I understand. I understand what it is that you're, you're saying there. But going back to the first, I mean, there's a lot of information here, so I apologize. But going back to the letter, this is one of the other clarifications I need. Going back to the letter, you had said that Dr. Almer handed you a letter asking you for a meeting, which was, I believe, the very next day.
Very first letter of any type of discipline was just handed to me, pulled it off the printer, handed to me as I walked by. And I have no documentation that we, there was, there was never discussed going to you. This is a disciplinary hearing letter. You need to attend this meeting. Nothing was ever discussed on it. And there was no written, since I even received it. All other discipline and all other meetings within the district are sent with an email notification.
Did you read that letter?
I did.
Why did you fail to go to the meeting the next morning?
It was very jumbled with a lot of information and dates and stuff and time. And I did not see the time of when this meeting was. And the location in that letter was not listed. I admitted I missed the meeting.
Okay. I still have one more question. Going to wherever letter G is in here.
Twenty-one, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay. So on page twenty-one, this email was sent to you by Dr. Almer. And it states that he would like you to give him a weekly update so that you can monitor, so that he can monitor what is occurring on a regular basis, I would think, weekly basis, since he asked for a weekly update, on what is going on in the athletics. And he sent that off to your supervisor, Mr. Keen. And he agreed that he thought this was a good idea. And he said, Mr. Keen said that he was going to discuss this with you. Did Mr. Keen discuss that with you?
The weekly updates?
Yes.
There was a meeting? So after this point, this was...
It says what these emails refer to.
This was what I, this is all new information for me. Because I was not included in this.
Well, even though you may not be, have included in this email, you obviously sent him on, it's documented that you sent him weekly updates. I think it was five or six times.
So the directive did, so when this happened, the directive was just in a, hey, can you send me updates? And when Stephen and I talked about it, it was, we didn't know what he wanted. There was, there's no direct, there was no written directive for these updates. And there was, the, the communication was really unclear. And both of us were confused on what was, what was actually necessary in this email.
Did you get, did you then get a clarification on what Dr. Almer was seeking?
I got it in a disciplinary letter. So I was never given the directive or the weekly emails, but I was disciplined for it.
Well, I know somewhere in here, I don't know where, but I know I saw that you sent him four or five, six, somewhere in that vicinity. So you're saying... So you're saying you were disciplined before you ever sent one to him?
I was disciplined.
For not sending them before you ever even sent him the first one?
Before, I was disciplined on not on a verbal directive in a meeting with no direction. I was disciplined for that.
Thank you.
And then I was later given the directive in the disciplinary letter.
Page three. Page, page three has the dates that Serena had sent the, the updates. And I'm going back to page 22, looking for a date. So Mr. Keen was sent this on January 12th. And I, it says the first one that you received, or that he received was on August 16th. So you didn't send him any updates in the six months that it was asked of you to send? This is what I'm trying to figure out.
There was no written directive to this.
Once you did actually though, receive instruction on what he was looking for, you obviously sent them. Because you, it says here, you sent them on the 16th, the 27th, then the 5th, then the 15th. And then the 25th. So you did know what he was looking for, so then you obviously started to give him the information he was seeking, correct?
That was after discipline had already been issued on it, without, on a directive that I was not.
Okay.
The written directive was not yet.
Right, which you did state. But my point is, did he ever ask you to stop writing those, those updates, those weekly updates? Did he ever tell you that he no longer wanted them? Because in this letter, it's stating that.
There was never any follow up on it.
From Dr. Almer?
He, he never told me to continue, he never told me to stop. Once a discipline letter was always issued, there was never any follow up and no room for, there was no, there was nothing. Once a disciplinary issue was issued, the only thing was were the dates that I was actually taking off for those days of discipline. And there was no corrective action, there was no communication on like, hey, let's, what's going on here? Or, okay, this is what I want to see. After the second time, I went out, I, I emailed him and said, what do you want in these weekly reports? Because I really don't know, there's no directive on, you want them, but what do you want in them? And the response back was, and this was within an email, the response back was, just give me an update of what's going on. There's no direction, no instructions. And even when I asked, again, I'm asking for direction and then being disciplined for it.
Did it, did it all, did Dr. Almer not request one from you? I mean, you did it over a period of, it looks like almost two months, but then stopped doing them. Because what's listed here is that you failed to follow the directive from your superior. In writing those updates to him. That's what this states.
He never asked to receive them. He didn't ask me if I, why did you stop doing these, hey, I didn't get your weekly update? There was, there was never any communication later on. Because I'm the only one that runs my department. So when I'm answering, when I'm sitting down to answer 100 emails at a time. Things get missed. And that's what the weekly updates just kind of fell in, one week after, one week after, one week. But there was never any communication, hey, am I getting a weekly update this week? A lot of the discipline here could have been prevented with just a phone call. Or, hey, are you doing this? I don't have any help in my department. Other, there's, every other administrator has help in their departments. I handle 365 events, 97 staff on my own.
Okay, thank you.
All of your questions?
Yes.
Are there other board members who have questions?
Serena, in what you were talking with Michelle on page three, letter C, do you agree with that statement or not? In the A1 thing?
No, I do not agree with that. I did not say the directive did not even be followed. And there was a point where I was, I was calling Dr. Almer with everything that was happening. So he knew of it immediately. And instead of writing the weekly reports. Because it was easier to provide a phone call of an incident that might have happened in the spur of the moment. Than to sit down and write this email. So he was aware of everything that was happening. And, um. And that, and when I stated that to him, he did not say anything about, okay, this is right, this is wrong, this can't be. I, he, he agreed that I was calling him with everything that was going on at that point. And after that, he said, when he came back with the discipline, he comes back with the directive is, I want a written. And that's when I emailed him and said, what do you want within this email? I have to ask for direction, a brief, a brief minimal directive is given and I have to ask for details on things. Can I just say something real quick in regards to this conversation?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure you should say something, this is time for asking questions.
Well.
So if you have a question for Ms. Henry, you can ask that, but this is not time for deliberation.
I will wait.
Okay.
I'm also taking a moment, I apologize. All right, a comment that this doesn't have to do with our binder, I want clarification, I'm hoping. You mentioned 100% participation in surveys. Can you give me the year that's occurred, please?
This past full year.
And prior to that?
I was working on them prior to that, I'm trying to get 100%. So from spring through spring of 22 through currently, there was 100%. Prior to that, I was not calling students out of class for that 100% participation. And after that, after our winter meeting on evaluations, I was. I go beyond trying to get these students to do this. You get the core students who do them. And then I go, I catch them as they're leaving on buses to get them to scan it and do it. I get them at lunch, I get them in the morning. And it comes down to usually about five students who do not do it. It's the point where I need to complete my report, so I start calling them out of class.
And then that was after our winter meeting where we had asked for the 100% participation? Because we didn't have enough at that point, correct?
What?
Because we were only receiving small amounts at that point, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to get clarification. I guess it's just working either. I just want to try to clarify this in my mind, as far as the, the two POs that we were talking about earlier. What was the reason for the first one not being correct? I, I wasn't sure.
Don't know.
What that was.
I don't know.
Okay.
I assumed it went out correctly. I don't know if it was something I didn't add on. Or if it was something that didn't get added on, if it was just missed on the P O. I don't want to blame someone else because I honestly don't know why it wasn't on there.
And I have one other question, the order and the equipment from the, the listing, the coaches and all of that. Do you go over all of that with the coaches at the point of when they get hired? Or do you do that at the meetings or where, what, how does that take place?
I created a coaches onboarding that goes over the handbook with them and the items they need to know. And purchasing items, I explain to them that this email goes out at the beginning of, at the beginning of the school year, in the September timeframe. And that's when you, that's when you put all your information on this and then you send it back to me.
Is that digital then, or is it just?
This, this form is, it can be digital. Some coaches like to print it off and hand it back to me, but it can be digital and calculated. I have it so it'll calculate, if you put in the quantity, it'll calculate it on itself.
Thanks.
Serena, I wanted to clarify, you, you said about the updates that you send weekly to the staff. Does that include administration?
Not the principals, it's, it's the buildings and grounds, the security, the maintenance. It's the people who have to set up the events. Or need that knowledge of, when do I need a field line? When's the basketball court need to be set up? It's, it's those people and that critical information that I send that to. That they know what events are coming up this week and they know, you know, if Wednesday we have something in the gym. They can work on something else while we're in the gym and then they're going to have to come back and clean for that night. Thank you.
I have a question on the comment you made. I assume it's your most recent evaluation. I thought you said the P I double A is questioning why principals are unaware of the disciplinary issues?
No. What, so P I double, as a member of P I double A, the school is a member of P I double A sports. P I double A in their constitution and bylaws state that the principal is head of athletics. And they can designate someone to be in charge of athletics. And that's where the athletic director position comes into play. They don't have anything to do with the evaluation. Okay, that's just, that's just the chain of command that P I double A sees happening. The evaluation was done by the high school principal, which would have been Mrs. Jenkins this spring. And it came back distinguished.
So the, the current one was distinguished?
Yes. I had one that was distinguished.
Which, which one?
That was done by Mr. Keen as the high school principal.
Okay.
The second one came back satisfactory, which was done by Mr. Keen.
Yeah.
And Dr. Almer added input into it.
Right.
And then the third one was done by Cindy Jenkins, which came back distinguished.
So they're right in that order as far as the years then, right?
Yes.
One, first one is distinguished, second one satisfactory, and the third one distinguished. Okay. Is that signed, are the evaluations signed off by Dr. Almer?
I don't know what happens after I'm done with it.
Okay.
I don't know that process. All I know is the evaluation does not fit my job description. It's designed for a teacher.
Any other board members with questions at this time?
Yes, I have one more question, please. So I would just, um, I would like a clarification. You had said that the softball coach doesn't follow protocol. But on page eight, it says here on Wednesday, May 22nd, Coach Chris Larson emailed an actual list of items. That the softball team needed for the 2023 season. So he emailed that you, to you on May 22nd of 2022 for the following season. But you stated tonight that he doesn't follow protocol.
He didn't turn it in the way of all the other athletes. He didn't, he didn't put these items on that when I asked for it in September.
It does say that it's May. Do you know why he, he has not done that? Have you asked him to follow the protocol or was he recently hired?
He was hired this summer because Mr. Allen and Mr. Brugard were in the interview with us. So it was back when he was there. So going over the coaches' meetings, orientation, yes. And he receives the emails. So the email would have been standard of like, okay, all the head coaches received that same email.
Okay, so if he'd received it, I mean, that was six months after the fact that he actually gave you then a list. Had you contacted him at all in that six months, asking him? Hey, I didn't receive a list from you of items that I might, you know, that you might need to start the season next year?
It's possible these items were ordered, there's possible, it's, I don't know when these items were ordered. Because they were not ordered according to putting it on and putting it out for bid. Because if the, if I ordered these items the previous May for them, so if they had them in the fall. They might have already had them and didn't realize they got them.
How's that possible? Are you not in charge of, of handing all of that equipment out to them?
Their equipment is stored upstairs or they're called and told that their equipment's here for them to come pick up.
Okay, well, it says on the same page that during the hearing. Serena Henry and her attorney claimed that she was the one who went to the storage area and handed out the softballs. Indicating that, that is why there were, they weren't ordered in essence because you had already had them. So, but you stated tonight that you don't remember who went there? Who, who received them?
Usually I go and grab the softballs and take them to them. So it would make sense for me to understand that I had done that. They also are in that storage room whenever they have an indoor practice to just store their equipment. They could have easily just grabbed them at that point and said, we received, we got them. We grabbed balls while we were upstairs earlier. I don't know when this happened. And I don't remember it. I don't remember what exactly went on.
Well, it's concerning that there's no communication. And no documentation. About how those things have been handled. Particularly with this coach. And I think that clears out my question, thank you.
Any other board member questions? Mr. Smith, do you have any questions in light of the board members' questions?
A very few, based on Mrs. Stemler's question relative to the weekly updates. Will you turn please to A1, page 24, Ms. Henry? Page 24. Is this a weekly update that you sent on February 1, 2022 to Dr. Almer and Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Had you ever sent one before?
I don't know. I'd have to look at my emails. I'd have to search my emails, which I don't have access to.
Well, you didn't bring anything with you tonight that showed that you had done anything prior to this, did you?
I don't have access to my emails. I did not bring it tonight.
Turn to page 26. Is this another update from you to Dr. Almer and Stephen Keen?
Yes.
And then turn to page 27. Is this an update from you to Dr. Almer and Mr. Keen on March 1?
Yes.
And then turn to page 30, please. Do you see the email from Dr. Almer on May 4, 2022, to Mr. Keen in which he relayed your implication that you did not understand that the weekly update was something that you were supposed to do? And do you see Mr. Keen's response that he discussed that with you? And he reminded you of her weekly, of the weekly update requirement in Mr. Keen's email? Do you deny that Mr. Keen had a conversation with you in which he reminded you about the weekly update requirement?
Where are you seeing that?
In Mr. Keen's email, the second paragraph.
Page 30.
Page 30, yes. Thank you.
I don't remember that conversation.
You don't remember it, or it didn't occur?
I don't remember if it occurred or having that conversation.
I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Henry, you are given an opportunity now to testify about anything that arises from the board questions or from Mr. Smith's question if you want to testify as to any facts. Again, this is not the time for closing argument, but if you want to testify to facts arising from those questions you've just been asked, you may do so now.
The original weekly update was never given to me in a directive. A conversation happened, so there was no documentation that I ever received that. I did weekly updates. Again, I run my department as myself. So I don't always get to sit down at my desk because I'm handing out equipment, I'm performing games. My job does not have me sit at a desk 9:00 to 5:00. So there's a lot of times emails are answered after hours. When are, what are the times that my weekly updates were sent after the directive was given to me? Thursday evening after 10 o'clock. Almost every single one of them. Might have been a couple that were before 10 o'clock. It was the last email I would send on Thursday evenings that Dr. Almer would have them for the board, to present to the board on Friday. Occurring from those weekly emails was discipline. So I would put something in a weekly email, it now became discipline. The budget items, why was I never told I could not do it? If I have a coach, I would tell them, you can't do this. Let's see how we can fix this. Where do we go from here? But we cannot do this. I was never told I could not do this, that this is against policy. I had no clue until I was disciplined for it, until it showed up in a discipline letter.
Any other testimony as to facts?
I don't think so.
Okay. So at this point, it would be appropriate to have closing argument, but we've also been here for nearly three hours and we might need to take a small break before there's closing argument. So my intention with respect to finishing the hearing, we should recess for maybe five or 10 minutes, reconvene at about 9:05. Then we can have closing arguments from each of the parties. And after that, since we agreed to allow public comment, there could be members of the public who can comment. There is a three-minute limit, and we'll be timing that closely because of the hour. But I would have the public comment occur after the closing arguments. Any questions or concerns about that from the board?
Okay, so we'll be recessed until about 9:05.
Mr. Smith, before closing arguments, there is one other housekeeping item. We've had submitted to the board exhibits that I've numbered H1 through H9, and I ruled that HH should not be admitted as an exhibit. However, is there any objection to H1 through H7 and H9 being admitted as exhibits?
No, sir.
Okay, they are admitted. And with that, we'll do closing arguments. Now, the protocol for doing closing arguments generally is that the party that has the burden of proof does the last closing argument. So with that in mind, Ms. Henry, I will ask you to give a closing argument first, then I will have Mr. Smith give his closing argument. As a layperson, I'm also going to give you an opportunity to briefly address anything he says in his closing argument, if you wish to do so afterwards. And I would suggest that both parties do their best to keep your closing arguments brief so that we can have sufficient time for public comment and start deliberations before too much time goes by. So with that, Ms. Henry, would you like to present a closing argument?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So as I have presented, I fulfilled my job duties according to the job description. What comes in question is the discipline that I have been issued for these items should have never reached the point of suspension or termination. These items in front of you are targeted items that are given to me, but not other employees within the district. So your discipline is not equal among all employees, or you would be applying job descriptions in the newspaper for every position of administrators. So no matter how minor are these discipline issues being addressed to all employees who have never answered an email within 48 hours? I do my job for our student athletes. Every decision I make is beyond them. It's to provide them the best opportunity. If it is a decision for, that pertains to the coaches, what can I do to make the coaches, so that all they have to do is coach? And that's what I do. The success is shown on how well I do my job, the communication that I have with outside sources, with teachers, and everything I handle in a position. In a position that handles 365 events a year, 97 employees, I do it by myself. I am human, and I make errors. I admit to those errors. But when I am targeted, time after time after time, it has to come to this, so it comes to your awareness that not all employees are treated equal. You may choose to dismiss me tonight from this position, but the footprint I have put on our athletic department is not replaceable. The items I have added into the athletic department that were never there before are not going to be picked up on the first day of somebody else walking in. The choice to dismiss me on August 2nd, two days prior to sports starting, when it could have been done in June, is an attack on our student athletes and those teams. My coaches respect me, my staff respects me, I do not yell at them, I do not degrade them, I do not humiliate them, and I've earned that respect from them and that trust that they know they're going to have officials at games, they're going to have transportation, and all they have to do is to coach. At the end of the day, this decision can hurt or move your sports program further. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. May I please the board? This is always a challenging situation when the board has to deal with employee discipline, terminations, expulsion. And I appreciate the fact that you paid such close attention to this proceeding, which is a very serious matter, both for Ms. Henry and also for the district. We're talking about a department head. We're not talking about any other level of employee in the district. We're talking about a department head who has overall responsibility, as she's made very clear, for the athletic functions of this school district. We're not talking about one incident, we're talking about multiple incidents. We're talking about a buildup of one-day suspension, two-day suspension, four-day suspension, all generally in the same scheme of things leading up to this request for a termination. This is a question, as are so many cases, based on credibility. We've heard Ms. Henry talk, she's got an explanation for everything, she points the little details about January 11, 2022 versus 2023, by way of saying, oh, that excuses everything that I have done. She acknowledged an error in Danville scheduling, but did she admit that she was responsible? No, that was an excuse, just like everything else is an excuse. It's always somebody else's fault, it's always a justification, it's never an acknowledgement of responsibility by a department head, not some other person at some other level. If we're looking at this case from a credibility point of view, as we should, because you've got a mound of documentation, you have the testimony of the superintendent that you know, and against a lot of that, it's Henry's word, and so how do you assess credibility? Let's think about a few things. Let's talk about that purchase order. That purchase order supposedly was somebody's mistake, I don't know how it happened, as so many other things in Ms. Henry's explanation, corrected almost a year later with an acknowledgement that, I don't know how it happened, I don't know, I've got to look into the budget. And this is not somebody who just started in this position. This is a person who was employed in 2019, and by 2022, she had processed a lot of purchase orders. For her to claim that she doesn't know the purchase order process, I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's not credible. It's also not credible that the weekly updates were not a directive, and all of a sudden they just by magic started to appear until they stopped. That was a consequence of a communication from the superintendent, it's very clear that it was. They didn't exist before, they came a couple of times, and then they stopped, and that was appropriately disciplined. The idea that it wasn't a directive has to weigh in on your judgment of Ms. Henry's credibility, which her case depends on. If you don't believe anything that she says, or even some things that you believe she says, you don't have to believe anything that she says. Again, you have to offset it against the documentation here, which is extensive. A superintendent whose record that you know, this idea that Ms. Henry was targeted has no foundation in any factual situation. We also have the communications with Morrison and the softball, and as Ms. Stedler pointed out, there was a communication about, I need this equipment. We came up with this budget form, but there's no acknowledgement that there had been a prior communication about ordering that equipment. And the idea that between April 17 and April 21, that there was a phone call when Mr. Larson is asking the same question about lunches, that has to do with credibility as well. I'm going to give you the focal point of credibility. Ms. Henry came in here tonight saying, I didn't know what this was about, I didn't know it was going to be here, I didn't know what was going on. This is a very prepared woman, she knew exactly what was going on, and she was trying to convince you that she didn't, for whatever reason that is. I submit to you, members of the board, that we have demonstrated, the administration has demonstrated the elements of the statute necessary to sustain termination, and that you reluctantly but necessarily support that recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Henry, would you like to respond?
I would. Again, I was not provided any information on what was going to happen tonight. The only documentation I received Friday, last Friday, was the date and location and time of this meeting. I was not aware of what was going to happen tonight. Any of the proceedings tonight, I flowed with, as I was being told, as you saw, because I was asking questions, can I do this, can I do that? I was not provided that information. So coming in here not prepared, I had nothing to prepare for. I had an assumption of what was going to happen, but I did not have that documentation. My attorney was not provided it either. As for the lunches, those emails, the original email that was sent was sent for the whole team. The second email on Friday was sent with the exact list of who needed to change the lunches. So there was communication in between there. When I talked to Coach, the communication more likely was, I need a list of exactly who eats what lunch, and that's the list that probably came in on Friday, causing the second email. That makes sense to why there was two emails in between there. I talked to Coach, he responded with a second email listing the students that changed, that needed to be dismissed from 1J, B, or C. I am targeted because male counterparts are not disciplined for the same reason, and I have the documentation that they do not answer emails within 24 hours. I have the documentation that Dr. Almer doesn't answer emails to me within 24 hours. So the discipline is not equitable across the board. The process of purchasing orders, I know how to process a purchase order. I don't process the bulk purchase orders, so I did not process the original purchase order that went through this. It was not done by me. So I don't know where that happened to why it wasn't all sent to the distributor. I'm sure there'll be retaliation for that within that department. Clerical errors, they happen by me, and as I have proven to you tonight, they happen by everybody. So if I'm being dismissed by a clerical error, if I'm being dismissed because I'm being targeted, and other employees are not being held to the same standard I am, you are now informed of these incidences. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Now will be time for public comment. Ms. Thomas, did you want to say a little bit about public comment before it starts?
All right, well, now courtesy of the floor and the public, on the issue that's before us. The courtesy of the floor will be a total of 30 minutes. State your name and address, you will have three minutes. When the buzzer goes off, complete your thoughts and take your seat. Who would like to be? You're not assigned, so anyone can...
Laura Winkelman, 10 Hillside Drive. I'm here because I have been an employee of the Jersey Shore School District in the athletic capacity of the auxiliary staff employed in swimming and track the last 17 years. I have worked and served under the last three athletic directors. That includes Serena Henry. I've always been impressed with her administrative organization and people skills, and in my judgment, she's the most effective, organized AD that I have worked with in the last 17 years. She is well-loved by students, faculty, principals, and many in the administration. So I have a few bullet points I want to say. I want to point out that no discipline has ever come to an AD prior to Mr. Almer taking his position at the school. That includes previous ADs who missed scheduling a bus, missed a game, missed a referee coming in. They were never disciplined, they were not fired. Did we play Danville that year? Yeah, we did. There was a mess-up, but we did still play Danville that year. To Mr. Almer's knowledge, there's never been a double PO, as he states. That doesn't mean there hasn't been a double PO. That doesn't mean that some other person in this administration had to put a second PO in. It happens. That's what happens. And I find it odd that this meeting was scheduled at the day that the middle school, high school had their open house, which prevented Ms. Henry from having her Act 93 representative here this evening to speak on her behalf. Who scheduled that? I want to stop by saying 365 games, 97 percent, 99.7 percent accuracy, support. I support Ms. Henry, and I hope you will as well.
Thank you.
My name is Charlie Winkelman, 10 Hillside Drive. I'm a pastor and emeritus of Jersey Shore Presbyterian Church, where I've pastored for 18 years. Also served as president of the Jersey Shore Ministerium for another few years. My wife Laura and I raised both our children in Jersey Shore area school district. When Laura was president of the high school and middle school PTO, we enjoyed serving hamburgers at football games, seeing our son and daughter march in the marching band, cheering our football team as they won game after game. Our daughter Suzanne was in the swim team, our son Matthew's played soccer, Laura's been an athletic assistant, as she described. We have enjoyed making Jersey Shore our home for the past 21 years, and we look forward to watching our grandkids involved in bulldog sports. We hope they will have Serena Henry as their athletic director. In our judgment, she is the best athletic director we have had during our 21 years here. I've been impressed by her outstanding character and diligent commitment to our community and schools as athletic director. As you heard, a national organization agrees, as she was one of only four athletic directors from PA and one of only 60 in the nation, received the NIA triple-A quality and program assessment designation as an athletic director. Serena cares about our kids, she cares about their families, their coaches, their education, their character development. She cares about our community, and she's been doing an outstanding job. With all that, I can't believe you are thinking of firing her. That seems insane. Given the full scope of her job, the charges against her are few and easily answered, one PO order, one email response, one missed meeting, one set of softballs. That's what you're going to fire her for? Are you crazy? I thought Jersey Shore area school district had a policy against bullying. In spite of this injustice, Serena is willing to reconcile and work hard to rescue this year's athletic programs from the uncertain start caused by her suspension, because she cares about our kids. She has the support of students, families, coaches, principals, her supervisor, our community, and most of the administration. There's more than enough division right now in our country. I hope that you, as responsible school board members, will help the administration to bury the hatchet, to affirm Serena as our athletic director, give her back pay for the suspension while you're at it, and continue to provide our students with what has proven to be the best award-winning athletic program possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katherine Shaw, 113 Bonnet Lee. I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I'm Serena's neighbor, and I will tell you, I watch this woman leave before my kids get on the bus at 7:10. I take the dog out at 10 o'clock at night, and she's coming home, and I say, Serena, how's it going? And I've never seen a bigger cheerleader who wasn't a direct parent of a child so excited about her children's success. I see her take care of details, I watched her go through her schooling, I watched her turn down other positions because she wanted this one. I don't think she's aiming to lose her job over a bucket of softballs or some jerseys. I understand errors remain. I hope you hold all our staff and administration to such high standards, because people have an awesome district, if everyone is as dedicated to their job as this woman is.
Thank you.
James Muthler, 142 Muthler Lane. I became, I was asked to help volunteer as softball coach. Beginning, I don't know the year, but I served in and out for over 12 years. And so I know problems we've had with some of our previous athletic directors. Coming on board, I was asked by, the head coach asked to have me put on the agenda. Current, the AD at the time, his incompetence for two board meetings, neglected to get me on the agenda. So I was waiting six weeks, three weeks into the season, before I was even approved and willing and able to help. Also, I am a PIA double-A official in another sport, and knowing the athletic director, the assigner, every year, when we were ready to start the season, Jersey Shore has not submitted their schedules yet, they are not complete, shows the incompetence, and that is two previous ADs. And to date, Ms. Henry has not followed in those footsteps. She is heads and shoulders above both the previous athletic directors. We always had, as volunteer coach, we always had missed buses, equipment not being delivered on time, there was incompetence all over the place, nothing ever happened. And you indicated that the head of maintenance had no bearing. We had those problems back then, too, and the athletic directors never were able And the athletic directors never were able to take care of it then, and they probably aren't now, being unionized, maintenance being unionized. I guarantee that that is part of the target on her back, is that they are pushing the superintendent to eliminate the problem, their problem. There is definitely a target on her back. She has brought excellence to this district in athletics and our athletes beyond compare to previous A.D.s. We talked about, we stood up and we took pledge of allegiance. In that pledge of allegiance, it says justice for all. This is nothing but injustice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Frodo, 33 Hawthorne Alley. I am currently police assistant soccer coach, as well as assistant middle school's coach in spring. So I'm here two seasons, been here this is my fourth season. We've had no issues with Serena on the guys' side. Not, as mentioned, we've not had busing issues, not have officials' issues. I can verify that she sends bulldogs and actions emails to coaches continually. Coach's meetings are roughly every month. An opportunity for different coaches to share their experiences, what's working for a different sport. We've incorporated stuff that we've heard in those meetings to help our programs out, to help our program. That wouldn't happen not hosting those meetings. As previously said, I don't know, it just blows my mind that we don't have more important things to worry about in this district than something as petty as miscommunication. One mess-up purchased. As a coach, she's got my back, and she's had it all along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, courtesy of the floor is closed. Mr. Holland?
At this point, the board will retire to deliberate privately about what the outcome should be. And I don't know how long those deliberations will take. Meeting is not adjourned, so we will reconvene after the deliberations to announce the decision. Eventually, that decision will be reduced to writing. I will be preparing a decision that will be signed and adopted by the board. And I will explain that further at the...
Are there any motions to come forward?
I'll make a motion for the dismissal of Serena Henry.
I'm going to second that.
You get that? This will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Ms. Stolberg?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Kinley?
Yes, with reservations. I do not believe the administration's two of the four rise to the level of discipline, uh, termination, but overall, I think I need to vote yes.
Mrs. Petrofsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stemlich?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine to zero.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I do want to advise you of the procedure from here. I will be preparing a written decision that will be signed on behalf of the board and then mailed to you. I expect that it will probably be a week or two before that decision is sent. You will have the right to appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Wycoman County. You will have 30 days from the date of that decision to appeal if you wish to do so. And now, I suppose if there's a motion to adjourn, that can be considered.
Angela made a motion to adjourn. Adjourned.